All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is February 8th, 2021. This is the USD 290 Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and do a roll call. Please say here and raise your hand when your name is called. Linda Alderman?
Here.
Chris Cunningham?
Here.
Julie Dandrio?
Here.
Susan Moore? She's joining us virtually. Susan, can you hear us? Yes, she's waving, okay. Shonda Olmsted is not here this evening. Melidia Payne?
Here.
Harold Wingert?
Here.
So we have six board members present. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. We do have a consent agenda tonight. It's our pretty typical consent agenda. There is some neighborhood revitalization on there, which we've all reviewed. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0 as well. We do not have any comments from the public tonight, so we will move on to our first item of business. This is an action item and discussion item. We have someone from Raymond James here. Greg Varenberg is joining us virtually to present our refinance options. Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Good evening. Appreciate the chance to join you at the board meeting this evening and have what should be some good news for the board. As you may recall, on January 25th, the board adopted the authorizing resolution, which gave us permission to start working on the refunding bond issue. Tyler Ellsworth, as your bond counsel at CUTAC Rock, permission to start drafting the legal documents for the refinancing. And we prepared ourselves to move pretty quickly after that January 25th meeting. We had already been in contact with Moody's Investor Service, which is the rating agency that provided bond rating for the district. Moody's had just released some new rating criteria, and so we had to work through that process with them. But pleased to report that Moody's affirmed the district's A1 rating. And then we took that a step further and we submitted your proposed refunding bond issue to the two municipal bond insurance companies to see if a quote for bond insurance would actually help us achieve a slightly higher level of savings on the refinancing. Build America Mutual, which is one of the two AA rated insurance companies, did provide a policy. It did help the overall savings. And so, once we had the rating assigned by Moody's and the AA insurance policy from Build America Mutual, we were in a position where we could move forward with the sale of the refunding bonds. And so, we coordinated with the district administration, the sale of the bonds, and we set the order period for the sale on February 1st. In hindsight, that appears to be a favorable move to push forward quickly because since February 1st, we've watched interest rates go up by about 10 basis points or 1/10th of 1%. So the savings today might have been slightly less than it would have been a week ago. But we pushed forward on February 1st, locked in the final savings. And before I walk you through the results of that issue, I thought it'd be helpful just to remind you where we left off on that January 25th board meeting. The estimated savings at that point in time was $1,387,828. That was based on an average interest rate of about 1.22%. And the savings level equated to a present value savings percentage of 6.2%, which seemed to be a healthy percentage in regards to the level of savings relative to the amount of bonds that we were refinancing. So, once we completed that order period and locked in the sale of the bonds to investors, we were able to establish the new average interest rate on the refinancing. The bonds that we chose to refinance had an average interest rate of 4.77%. And the average interest rate on the new Series 2021 refunding bond issue was 1.09%, down a little bit from that 1.22% we had shared with you in late January. And based on that new average interest rate of 1.09%, the savings was slightly higher, with the final savings on the refinancing being $1,468,988. And again, we look at the savings as a percentage of bonds being refinanced, and that present value savings went up a little bit as well, to about 6.52%. So overall, you know, very pleased with the outcome of the refinancing. It ended up at a slightly higher savings than where we had started, which we always feel is a good outcome. But when you think about the benefits on the refinancing, again, we locked in that savings of $1,468,000. We lowered the interest rate from 4.77% down to that 1.09% interest rate, so quite a drop in the interest rate. But we also shortened up the repayment schedule by two years on the bonds being refinanced. And that's very similar to the refinancing we completed in 2020, where we were able to shorten up the repayment schedule as well and do all of that inside of the projected mill levy that you currently have. Right now, I believe your mill levy in the bonded interest fund is 17.994 mills. And so, the refinancing we completed last year and the refinancing that we completed this year locked in a meaningful amount of savings, shortened up that repayment schedule, but didn't put you in a position where you're going to have to raise the mill levy on the taxpayers. The other item that I had shared with you at the meeting in January was that this is not the first refinancing that the district has completed. Going back to 2002, which is when I began working with the district, you've taken advantage of low interest rates and completed seven different series of refunding bonds when opportunities presented themselves. And when we add in the savings that we've now locked in on this issue, the $1,468,000, it brings the cumulative actual savings from those refinancings to $13,901,466. And it's, I mean, when you think about that, that is a very large amount of dollars that will stay in the district rather than being paid out to bond investors. One thing to keep in mind, though, that that $13.9 million, that is the actual savings, it's net of all costs, but that savings will be over the remaining life of the bond issue. And just to put that in perspective, we oftentimes will look at a future stream of savings and calculate that present value. In other words, if we could give you that $13.9 million today as a one-time upfront amount, that would have a present value of about $6.9 million today. So hopefully, this is good news for the board and the district. Really appreciate the time and effort on the part of the administration of the district. It takes a lot of work to go through that rating process, work through the legal documents with Tyler in his office, and take care of all of the steps that need to be completed to capture the savings and complete the refinancing. So didn't want to overlook the effort on the part of your administration to help capture the savings for your taxpayers. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Tyler can speak to you about the steps that you would go through to approve the results that are presented this evening and complete the closing of the refunding bond issue, which is scheduled from March 1st. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Varenberg? Okay. I don't think we have any questions at this time. Is there anything that we need to do aside from go ahead and take action to approve that refinance option? Or is there something specific Tyler wanted us to do this evening? Or is this something that is for Terry and others to do after we choose to take action or not?
It's a little bit of both. Good evening, board members. This is Tyler. Can you all hear me well enough?
Yes.
All right. Well, congratulations to you all and to Greg, his team, for such phenomenal refinancing. So, first of all, I'm really happy to see the results. They were good. Pain and...
We are breaking up just a little bit, and we're struggling to hear you.
Oh, thank you for letting me know. Is that a little better?
Yes, thank you.
Great. There's one item, of course, the bond resolution, that we would request the board consider and approve this evening. And that's the only board action that's required in order to move forward on this between now and closing. The other item, which isn't, which is not a board action, is simply getting all the documents signed. And I believe that those were delivered in a packet on Friday. And if it would be possible to get the signature turned around and FedEx back to CUTAC's office perhaps in the next day or so, that would keep us moving forward with the things we need to do on our end to get the transcript to the Attorney General's office for review and approval prior to closing on March 1st.
Okay.
But that's, that did from my perspective.
Okay, great. And Terry's nodding at me that, yes, we have that packet, and yes, that will be doable. So we can certainly do that if the board decides to go ahead and pass this approval for the bond resolution. So, any other questions before we take some action or not this evening? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion that we approve the refinance of bonds as presented by Greg Varenberg?
Some moved.
Kind of had two at the same time here. All right, Susan, we'll go with you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, so it was moved by Susan Ward and seconded by Chris Cunningham that we approve the refinance of bonds as presented tonight. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0.
Greg and Tyler, thank you. Terry and I will get, make sure that we have all the documents signed and prepared. We'll get those to you tomorrow morning, or at least FedEx them to you tomorrow morning. I want to, again, thank you and express my gratitude for all the work between both CUTAC and Raymond James. It's a huge savings for our community. We appreciate both of you very much. Hope that we can continue to do similar things in the future as the opportunities arise. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us be a part of it. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All right. So, we are going to move on to our next item, which is what we discussed our last meeting, the use of Violet Defense for some cleaning and disinfectant, UV disinfectant. There's a little bit of time for discussion, and then if we'd like to take action to approve the pilot. Dr. Cobb, you have some updated information for us?
Yep, so there were a couple of things that were asked of me last week, and I had some conversations with both Ally and Terry at Violet Defense. Maybe the most prevalent one was who is responsible for the testing and facilitating the testing. I think I shared an email with all of you that ultimately Violet Defense is going to take care of all of those things for us. I think that they are looking for an opportunity to get their product in the hands of people and begin to build what they have. There isn't, there isn't much downside to this to us. If we, if we try it and we like it, great. If we try it and we don't like it, okay. I did have some conversations with Darrell about what it meant to us and what we needed to do and whether or not it was going to create more work for his staff. His response was that he's very interested in seeing how the product works. So, it would be certainly well within the opportunity for us to do so without much hindrance on our staff. If we, well, once we have the products, we'll take some opportunities and really identify areas in which we want to try these things and then work through the testing with Terry and Ally at Violet Defense if the board so chooses to move forward with a pilot.
Does Violet Defense have preferences for where their product is placed, or is that totally up to us?
No, it's going to be totally up to us. I think what they, what they did identify was that it will be dependent on how much we want to put into it. So, I think that they're going to try to give us something that we can maneuver through classrooms and see how it works in classrooms at the end of the evening. Again, that, that creates a little more for our custodial staff, but not an outrageous amount for custodial staff. Simply on wheels, roll it into the room, turn it on, and don't let anybody in there. I think the other pieces will be, will be placed in areas in which they can be static. So I think we're going to, we're going to do something in a bathroom, maybe something in our large common spaces, just to see how it responds in comparison to the normal cleaning routine. If it's significantly different, then obviously there's something to be celebrated there. If it's not significantly different and it doesn't change the overall cleanliness of the space, then certainly that's what Violet Defense is looking to find. So, again, an opportunity for us to do something cutting edge and innovative without having a whole lot of impact and responsibility on the district, should it not work the way that we would like it to.
Any other questions about this for Dr. Cobb? Would anyone like to make, take action to approve the pilot with Violet Defense?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we, I guess, start this, what we would call this trial area of their equipment.
All right, thank you. And I heard a second by Susan, so it was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Susan Moore that we approve the pilot program with Violet Defense. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0.
Greg and Tyler, thank you. Terry and I will get, make sure that we have all the documents signed and prepared. We'll get those to you tomorrow morning, or at least FedEx them to you tomorrow morning. I want to, again, thank you and express my gratitude for all the work between both CUTAC and Raymond James. It's a huge savings for our community. We appreciate both of you very much. Hope that we can continue to do similar things in the future as the opportunities arise. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us be a part of it. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All right. So, we are going to move on to our next item, which is what we discussed our last meeting, the use of Violet Defense for some cleaning and disinfectant, UV disinfectant. There's a little bit of time for discussion, and then if we'd like to take action to approve the pilot.
Does Violet Defense have preferences for where their product is placed, or is that totally up to us?
No, it's going to be totally up to us. I think what they, what they did identify was that it will be dependent on how much we want to put into it. So, I think that they're going to try to give us something that we can maneuver through classrooms and see how it works in classrooms at the end of the evening. Again, that, that creates a little more for our custodial staff, but not an outrageous amount for custodial staff. Simply on wheels, roll it into the room, turn it on, and don't let anybody in there. I think the, the other pieces will be, will be placed in areas in which they can be static. So I think we're going to, we're going to do something in a bathroom, maybe something in our large common spaces, just to see how it responds in comparison to the normal cleaning routine. If it's significantly different, then obviously there's something to be celebrated there. If it's not significantly different and it doesn't change the overall cleanliness of the space, then certainly that's what Violet Defense is looking to find. So, again, an opportunity for us to do something cutting edge and innovative without having a whole lot of impact and responsibility on the district, should it not work the way that we would like it to.
Any other questions about this for Dr. Cobb? Would anyone like to make, take action to approve the pilot with Violet Defense?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we, I guess, start this, what we would call this trial area of their equipment.
All right, thank you. And I heard a second by Susan, so it was moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Susan Moore that we approve the pilot program with Violet Defense. We'll do a roll call vote. Linda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio?
Yes.
Susan Moore?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0.
I think there's one more thing to add with Violet Defense that doesn't change it. I think it does go to show the expanse and the, the opportunities that our board has to impact our district overall. This opportunity came from a passing conversation with, with a board member, which, again, begins to open up different doors for us that wouldn't have been there otherwise. So, I appreciate when our board communicates with, with people, specifically businesses, about our district and the things that we do and gives us opportunities that wouldn't otherwise have, have been there. So, just, again, another opportunity to realize the impact that the board members have overall on our district and how we function.
Well, and, and for me, it's really exciting that it kills more microbes than just COVID.
Yes, absolutely.
That is, that's the coolest thing.
Yep. It will be, it will be fun to watch this thing happen and see how it really impacts the overall space. It'll, it'll be an interesting study, that's for sure.
And you'll keep us posted on when it's implemented and when we should start hearing results and stuff.
Yep, absolutely.
Perfect, perfect. All right, well, we are moving on to our next section. We need to have some action and discussion. Mr. Grell, Dean, is going to present about the wiring project and the E-Rate bid plan.
Perfect, thank you. We did get all of our bids back finally. We planned to come back at the last meeting to do this, but not all the bids were in. And the ones that did come in, we had to still tabulate, and it was going to rush our timeline too much. So we're back here now at this meeting to present the information that we received from our bidders. Um, so to refresh, a project overview. We're doing a complete replacement with the approval of the board and with the approval from the government of the funding. Complete replacement of all wiring at the middle school. All fiber, all copper, from the patch panel all the way to the wall plate. Every single piece of copper and fiber in that building will be replaced under this project because it all needs to be replaced. We talked about that at the last meeting. There are pieces literally that will fall apart and crumble in your hands, and it takes a lot of time to fix those. Additionally, termination and testing for all of those wires, certification. So every single wire goes through a wire map test, and they give us, if we want to, a printout of every single wire passing that test. We're going to not do every single wire. They'll all be tested, they'll all be certified, but I don't want a piece of paper for every single one of them. So we'll go through it with the technician. And then two brand-new 42U racks. This isn't a luxury, and this is really the only time we can replace these. They're just giant racks, like that one over there. That's a 19U equipment rack. It's more of a floor-standing tall one, it's about this tall. And the reason we replace it at the same time is because all of our wiring runs into the top of the rack and is terminated inside of the rack. So this is the time to replace it all at once. And the new racks have what's called 0U mounted PDUs. So our power that we take for all of our servers can mount vertically as opposed to taking up rack space horizontally. And we could fit more stuff in one rack.
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay. It's, it's great. They're great things to replace and get new technology. The wiring in the building is original to the building. I'm not sure, what is that?
1997.
1997. And it operates at 1/10th of the speed of our slowest cable in any other building. And our slowest cable in any other building is current cable. So 1/10th the speed at the middle school. I think middle school teachers that are watching this would agree that their building is needing some help. And again, the wall jacks, they break in your hand if you pull them out. You're replacing a wall jack. There's no, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Bids. We had a mandatory site visit as part of our project. So we had 11 companies over two days that showed up to our mandatory site visit, had great questions, and kind of guided the way for how this was all going to take, or all going to be bid. And of those 11, you see these individuals here that actually submitted bids. We've worked with almost all of these companies in some capacity. We've talked to all of these companies. We've worked with Two Trees, Envision, and a bit with Nextech. Envision has been probably one of our greatest partners of these that are listed, that we've done a lot of work with and continue to do a lot of work with. This is the middle school, kind of a drawing of where all the drops are. We had to physically find every single drop and put it on a map and show them where they were, security cameras, access points, and every drop in every single room. And we think we got them all. We, we counted like three times, but we think we got them all. Here's a kind of a breakdown of the bids. You'll see there's kind of two different numbers here. The base bid is the thick dark blue, whereas the light blue is an alternate bid we requested for a second drop to every access point. So up here above, Julie, we have an access point, and that provides wireless access to all of our students and staff and all devices in the building. The new access points that we've been putting in and the new technology standard is you run two network cables to it, and it doubles the bandwidth throughput to that device because literally, not literally, almost everything in our building anymore is wireless. Our desktops are probably the only thing, and they're in the teachers' rooms, and that's it. Everything else is wireless, so those little guys work overtime. So we asked for a second drop. At the time, we were not aware if it was E-Rate eligible or not, meaning we could get the government subsidy for it. But our E-Rate consultant said, yes, that is E-Rate eligible as well. So in our proposal to you, we would ask for that second run because we do it in all of our other buildings, and it is E-Rate eligible. When we looked at all of our bids, CRW, which is our E-Rate consultant, provides us with a rubric to grade all of our companies on. You'll see that rubric in our scoring here, based on prices of eligible goods and services, our service history with the company, expertise of the company, and understanding of needs, completeness of bids. Pretty much everyone scored just fine on the lower half of that. Price of eligible goods and services, they give us an actual equation there to solve for every single person. So it's kind of an even grade, it's not subjective, it's based on that. So, our low company was Two Trees, and this is the alternate project included for $102,000, $102,915. And then there will be a cost overrun, and that's probably not the best word for this, but that's what I'm going to call it. We know there's going to be additional costs, number one, from cable demolition and removal. So every company refused to do a cable demolition, well, they didn't refuse to. We asked them to kind of steer clear of it right now because it wasn't E-Rate eligible, number one. And number two, we didn't know for sure what demolition was going to look like, how they're going to get in there. Are they going to pull everything out from the get-go and then come and back and put it in? What we'd probably expect from them is that they'd run cable as they pulled it out. So they know, I'm pulling five out, I'm putting five in. So we will work with that, and I do want to emphasize that this project, we have multiple layers of approval here still. This is not saying we're going forward with it, but that also this piece right here is not a requirement for them to do. So we can come back and say, nope, we're doing the demolition ourselves, or we're going to have another company do the demolition, or we're going to bid it out as a whole separate project, pulling all that wire out. But it is not E-Rate eligible, so there's no benefit to throwing it into the project right now anyway. The other cost overrun, if you'll call it that, is additional runs. Again, we walked the entire building and looked in high and low ceilings everywhere. I would bet we missed one cable at least. So, we will ask that vendor to provide us a per foot or a per run cost for those additional runs. But both of these combined, we're not talking about a whole lot of money. Adam, John, and myself did the cable demolition at the high school. Took us two days of just running around and pulling cable out. The luxury we had there was all the ceiling tiles were down, and you just started clipping zip ties and pulling cable out. So, it's going to look a little different in the middle school. We'll get a good quote from them once we pick a company tonight, if we decide to pick a company tonight. And then if we don't like the numbers they give us, we look around and see what else we could find for cable demolition. So at that point, it would be our recommendation that we approve Two Trees Technologies' bid, including the additional CAT 6 run, CAT 6A run to each wireless access point for a project total of $102,915. And then the other numbers below are kind of just informational. Category 2, the funds we have available for 2021 through 2025, $410,000. So we haven't touched any of our allotment yet. It just reset in 2021, so we have a brand-new fresh allotment. Our free and reduced lunch percentage that we are using is last year's numbers, 54 percentage, 54%. And then our category 2 max subsidy per project, we can only apply 80% of the project cost out of that $410,000. So this project, based on that math, would cost the district just over $20,000 to get an entire building rewired, plus the cost overrun stuff that we're not sure about yet. That's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
I do also want to clarify the layers, layers of approval here. So if we approve tonight Two Trees' bid, it then goes to USAC, which is the E-Rate Government Department that takes care of this. If they approve it, it comes back to the board one more time. And they say, board, you have the funds, you have our approval, do you still want to do this project? So the entire project lies in your hands. There's no question of what's going to happen next.
All right, thank you, Dean.
I had one question. You say the funds available are for 10, 152, they just reset. What are other things that you, that we have on the, on the horizon that we're going to need?
Yep. One of our next projects will be the wireless access points that we're looking at up here. The, the great thing that happened this time, this year with E-Rate, is that category 2 previously was split up to where every building had a... category 2 previously was split up to where every building had a bucket based on their enrollment. Now it's all one bucket, and they say, just spend it. So we've done our network switches before. We've done our battery backups in the buildings before. Wireless access points are next. Typically, the only thing that they'll allow is anything that gets internet into the student hands, wirelessly or wired. Excuse me. So our next one would be the wireless access project, or wireless access points being completely replaced across the district, which we have a ton of, and that would probably chew into that $410,000 pretty quick. Beyond that, there is a list from CRW that says, these are the exact things you can replace. It's pretty limited to just the wireless stuff, but we will keep keep track of that list and make sure there's nothing on there that we need, because this is, this is good money. 80% subsidized.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean. I think this is great. It's, I agree with you. It's well overdue to do it. So Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the bid recommended to us.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Harold Wingert and seconded by Melidia Payne that we proceed with the Two Trees Technologies for the OMS E-rate Rewiring Project. We will do a roll call vote. Lynda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0. Dean, thank you so much for all of your work with this project. I'm sure it has not been easy, but...
Kinder's going to take over now.
Perfect. Well, welcome up. Kinder Rhodes is going to talk about our next technology item tonight. Thank you for joining us. He's going to talk with us about the boardroom sound system.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
So one of the main goals is to replace all the speakers and fix the crackle with the mixer. And warning everybody ahead of time, Dean's going to show you guys that, and it's a little bit harsh to the ear.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of a problem.
He was testing my brainwave, is that what? Yeah, okay.
One of the other goals is to improve the audio distribution to YouTube, Google Meets, and the audience. So people that are watching from YouTube are in present, and also the people that are joining via Google Meet. So one of the ways that we'll be able to do that is we'll take what we're videoing and stream it out and provide better audio to the people. Another thing that we would like to do is provide more XLR outputs, or inputs, rather. So each one of your guys' mics would be on a separate thing, so we can control the volume of each of your mics individually, kind of make it a cleaner input as well.
We look at the ground. Some of you are paired together, so we have Harold and Julie on the same mic. So we can't have individual control of your levels. You guys both share them. So each one of you have six inputs, and there's more than six of them.
Oh, so you want to mute me, is what you're saying? Okay, I understand. That's, I vote yes for that.
Another one of our goals is to be able to mix things on the fly. So we would have a soundboard back by the computer, so whoever is running the stream can adjust levels of volume based on the needs for the video stream or the speakers in the audience. And then another thing that I wanted to talk about is feedback. So whenever a microphone is pointed at a speaker, it, they talk to each other, and it just echoes back and forth, and that's what feedback is. And so that's one of the reasons why there's not speakers above you guys at the moment, is because the microphones are pointed up, and then when the speakers talk to each other with the mic, it provides feedback, and it's not super pleasant. So with the new mixing system that we would have, we would have what's called a mix minus. And so we would be able to implement speakers above you. That would allow you to hear stuff like the Google Meet easier. But besides, or with those speakers, we would take out your guys' microphones, so you wouldn't be hearing the feedback that comes with that. And we would also have different mix minuses for the Google Meet and that type of stuff.
One of the current issues we have is that the computer feeds into the soundboard. The soundboard feeds the room. The soundboard also feeds back to the computer for the YouTube stream. So anything generated on the computer is looping and echoing and looping and echoing, and the people at home hear this. So this would fix that as well, while retaining full audio for the audience, and then mix minus for everyone up here. So you can hear Susan much better. You can hear Raymond James much better, or anyone that represents Kutev Rock or Raymond James, you can hear him way better up here. With mix minus, we go.
All right.
This is another optional project. It's the video project. So the projectors that we currently have in here, they're not as easy to see when there's more light. So if we were to get newer projectors, they'd become more visible in higher light environments. And they would also come with a higher resolution, so it'd be a better picture as well. And we would also like to be able to update our VGA system. So if we have someone that comes in and they plug in their computer, we have to find a new adapter based on the needs for the device that they're plugging in to put on the screen. And with that, sometimes the adapters walk off, and that's a lot of money to replace them each time. So if we go with HDMI, which is one of the more common mainstream outputs or inputs, it'd be a whole lot more efficient and less expensive. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Yeah. How about the experience for the taxpayer who's listening? You know, sometimes I've been on that with Susan. It's hard for me to, are we improving that experience for them?
Absolutely, absolutely. Once they came to light tonight, when we had Greg talking about the refinance, this is going to get complex. Our cameras, our network-based cameras, and our sound system here is just analog, straight to the sound, soundboard, and straight out to here. To get it synchronized on the computer, there's an 800-millisecond delay. Now, when Greg gets on Google Meets, he goes through the sound system, but the video over here is live, so there's an opposite 800-millisecond delay. So everyone that was at home watching that just now has that annoying thing where their mouth is moving faster than the words are coming out of their mouth. So we can fix that as well. We can improve the audio quality. We can fix that. The reason we have your mics kind of set where they are is because if we had your levels elevated a little bit, and we introduced feedback somehow or got something, I have to stand up, sprint across the room to fix it before it becomes an issue, which I wouldn't make it in time, I guarantee it. Because when that starts, if you've ever heard that screech start, and they get louder and louder and louder, and then you think the speakers are going to blow, that's what would happen to us. But now, if we have mixing capabilities back here, just tap, turn Harold down, mute Harold, whatever we have to do.
Mute them. Mute them. That's it.
And then the final piece of that is, currently, we have a Google Hangouts participant. We have a microphone on the Chromebook, which is not ideal. So we tried putting them on the computer and just having that audio playing it out here and then playing it on YouTube, but again, we generate that loop at that point. So if we could do mix minus from the computer and pull out that Google Meet being broadcast back to YouTube, it's already on the computer, we don't have that issue, and we have superb quality audio for that remote person, and we can play out here for you as well, so you can hear Susan better, and we can control that level. Yes, great question.
Okay. And what's the timeline if we approve it tonight?
We are not approving. We're still waiting for numbers back. We don't even have budgetary numbers yet. So this is kind of a Kinder saying hello and introducing the project. We'll come back with some numbers, and then we'll have a timeline after that. But the complete speaker replacement, rewiring everything while we're in here, getting everything back there, it'd be, it'd be a quick project because we'd have to have a board meeting two weeks after we approved it. So we'll time that appropriately, so we can make sure that we're not having any board meeting interruptions. But we'll probably be a few months out before you think about starting. We have a rewiring task to worry about now.
So question.
Yes.
Are we going to do this in-house and just get the equipment? Are we going to let?
We have experts coming because we don't want to mess this up. We want to have great quality audio, and the way to do that is to go through an audio visual vendor.
I agree.
They are a great partner, KCA Beats. They are a great partner of ours. They've done triple workforce all over the district. They've done our first laser projector at the high school, which has been incredible, the one that's in the cyclone room. You see how bright and vivid that picture is. We'll have that in here, so there's no more turning lights off to read text on the screen. Yeah.
Good.
I had a question.
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, I was, had a financial question like that, but he answered, you answered that. I had one more of what funds would we, would it come out of to pay for it?
Capital outlay dollars. This would just be a regular technology project at that point.
Okay, very good. And then, as we all know, I have my hearing difficulties, so I completely appreciate and support things to make it better. A question I had was, will there be any, so I have heard from people who watch it and my own self, like right now, when you're speaking, you're not speaking into the microphone.
Right.
So will we have like a second microphone? Because a lot of times, there are two people up here, and the people that watch it on live, or whatever you want to call it, they can't hear the second person, or other people they can't hear as well, struggle to hear the other one.
I think we have that capability, because right now, our limitation is that mixer can only handle the inputs we have on it, which is why it's built this way, or six inputs, because it can only handle six inputs. When we get a new mixer, we can have, I believe, 16 inputs. So we'll have that freedom and flexibility to say, we're going to add a microphone here, point it off the side of the podium, we're going to do an overhead mic, or we're going to, we're in COVID times, so we're going to do overhead mics only. We're back to normal meetings. We're going to, we're going to have that flexibility that we don't have right now. Absolutely.
Very good.
A couple of things. Tech has kind of their own capital budget as well, so we talk about capital budgets. They're kind of two different things. Tech can kind of work through this. But you can also think about how this boardroom could look in terms of our, like the stage at the back. We have overhead microphones. We could simply drop them, so there's not a microphone specific to the podium. So wherever you were at in this room, you could hear them through the mic. We would certainly have the ability to create that technology.
And so that would help when, when you get up, like you just did.
Yes.
And we could hear you, or the, our viewers could hear you then.
Okay. And then just one more question, I promise. Just thinking about like funding and everything. Do we, prior to COVID, we did not like livestream like we do now? Do we plan to continue that, or is that something that we will stop?
Yes, 100%, because we got rid of the recording hardware over here. So we do it to YouTube now live. It's easier for us. It's more streamlined for us. We don't have to click anything tomorrow. It's already on the internet forever. So before, we had DVDs. We make a DVD of every meet. We pull it back over to a computer, we edit it live, or edit it after the fact, then put it back on YouTube and upload it anyway. So now, this is the new normal. It's so much easier. It's much better quality with the new cameras. We're going to have better audio. I mean, we've done it now. The last thing, again, is the video for you to see these presentations a little better. So that will be a separate project. We're not going to tuck it into this one unless there's a great cost advantage for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you so much, Kinder, for presenting. And I do want to point out that Kinder Rhodes is a student at OHS, for those watching. He is doing some intern work with Dean this, is it this semester or this year?
This year.
This year. Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and we appreciate you introducing Kinder. I think it's important for us to recognize the number of students that we've put into our community in different capacities. Kinder's been a fantastic addition to our intern team, and look forward to seeing what the, what he can continue to do for us as we, as we finish up the year.
So we're going to move on to our next section, which is the Classified Staff COVID Leave. And we all have had this document and have been able to review it. But Dr. Cobb, do you want to give us a brief overview so we can address any questions?
Yeah, so just if we remember what this is for, when we, when we approved the MOA with, with the Ottawa Education Association with our teachers to, to address COVID leave after the, the law no longer provided supports for them, we had indicated that when we find the right thing for classified staff, we would, we would do something for classified as well. Just so that people can understand the complexities of classified versus licensed staff, our classified staff do many different things, where typically our licensed staff is pretty consistent across the board in expectations and how they come to work. But we have some classified staff, if you were to look at Para Educators, who could remote in and help students in that event. Custodians have no opportunity to do that. If you look at the high school, we have two secretaries sitting right next to one another. One of them is the Activities Director Secretary, who can, who can really take probably four or five days at a time and, and be at home and work remotely and still fill that entire day with things. The, the Attendance Secretary absolutely could not. So the, the ability for them to take COVID leave like we've done for teachers is very different and not consistent across, across all avenues. So what we came up with was the notion that we would provide every classified staff member with five additional sick days specific to COVID leave. If you are quarantined, if you are positive, we would give you at least five days of paid benefit. From, from this day moving forward, if we wanted to do some things retroactive for the last week in between when, what was the MOA and what we would do now, then those who've had to utilize those times, we could, we could do some things retroactive for them. If they utilize the five days, great. If they don't utilize the five days, they don't get to keep the sick, because we're not just giving them five free sick days. It's specific to COVID. We identify it as COVID, and we'll keep track of that. But just like with, with our licensed staff, it's specific to them. If their kids are quarantined, but they are not, they have to use sick leave to take care of their kids. If they are quarantined, we'll provide them up to five days of COVID leave. So it's kind of where this is at, and I think the, the best we could do for classified staff during this time is, as we get ready, hopefully, to, to get through the remainder of the year.
Are there any questions, Dr. Cobb, before we take action on this tonight?
So will this money be able to be used off some of the COVID money we've received if we have to pay this out?
Yeah, we could certainly take any, any, any costs that are associated with COVID leave out of our, out of our S R 1 funds. Absolutely.
Would anyone like to take action and approve the COVID leave for classified staff?
Madam President, I move, I move that we approve the COVID leave for the classified staff.
I have a question. Do we want to make it retroactive to MOU?
To the MOA.
MOA.
Yeah, we could certainly make it retroactive.
Is that okay, Lynda? I will second that then. Lynda, thank you.
Okay. So it has been moved by Lynda Alderman and seconded by Harold Wingert that we approve the COVID leave for classified staff, and making a statement also that is retroactive to the initiation of the MOA for non-classified staff. We will do a roll call vote. Lynda Alderman?
Yes.
Chris Cunningham?
Yes.
Julie Dandrio, yes. Susan Moore?
Yes.
Melidia Payne?
Yes.
Harold Wingert?
Yes.
And that passes 6-0.
Okay, as, as we move to 6.1, I'm going to take your job for a little bit. I apologize. As we move to 6.01, sometimes I get a little, I get a little crazy and excited up here.
Do you want to sit here?
I miss being up there. I honestly do. I'm just sitting out here in the peanut gallery. But we, we want, this is not an action item, but we, we wanted to have a conversation about what we're discussing with, with prom, graduation, and promotion at, at all levels, elementary all the way through our high school graduation and promotion, and specifically as with prom as well. Our students really didn't get to have any of those things as normal last year. We didn't have any, well, we had some kind of modified promotions. We, certainly not like we, we typically would. Graduation was very different, and prom didn't exist at all. So as, as we've learned that we can do some things in this environment, we wanted to, to make sure that we can still provide some things while still meeting the expectations of, of our county and our health department, and, and making sure that we, we maintain a safe environment. So the, the most important one in my mind is graduation, and making sure that we can, we can celebrate our students in an appropriate manner and get back to some of those things. So I think Kelly's going to talk about graduation, and then we'll talk about prom and promotion after that.
Absolutely.
Dean, do you, oh, perfect. So I know that Dr. Cobb's had attached just a quick information about graduation. So we have surveyed our students and our parents regarding graduation, as well as what I did instead of putting a committee of students together and only being able to hear the voices of select students. I took cyclone hour last week, and I just went around, and our students sit in pockets with their, their friends that are seniors, and I just talked with them. And I said, hey, talk to me about your thoughts on that survey that you filled out in advisory the other day, and just had those genuine conversations with a lot of different student groups. I talked to almost about 70 different students, of course, in the course of those two days. So Dean, if you slide down, the first one are the results from the student survey. Oh, I have it, sorry. I'm sorry, Dean. The student survey. We had about 93 students that completed that survey. A lot of the kids told me that they did it as an advisory class, or they did it with their friends, and so we didn't get all of the students to reply. But you'll see, the majority of the students, they do want to host some type of a traditional graduation at Steve Grogan Football State. But you'll see, the majority of the students, they do want to host some type of a traditional graduation at Steve Grogan Football Stadium on the date that was originally set, which is May twenty-second at seven PM. A lot of the students, when I went around and talked with them, they just want something to be normal, something to feel traditional, and that's why they feel that way. And so we also gave them a question that said, what, what aspects of graduation are most important to you? And we told them just to click all that apply. What you'll notice about those top four, those top four really can only be, I can only do those things in a traditional setting. That first one, a lot of them clicked that and said walking across the stage, but in the comment section, they wrote, watching my friends walk across the stage as well. And so throwing, tossing their caps as a class, taking pictures before and after with all of their friends, and having their family and friends be present. And so those were the top four things that the student had selected. We sent a similar question to parents, just that if they had to pick between a traditional and more of a drive-up ceremony similar to last year. We didn't get as many parent responses, and I didn't have many more parents respond over the weekend, but the parents that did respond, the majority of them are traditional. When I've talked, spoken with parents at basketball games, or just at different events, overwhelmingly, I do hear that we would like to have a traditional graduation. So our proposal would be that we host a traditional graduation at Steve Grogan Football Stadium on Saturday, May twenty-second at seven PM. We would follow the safety protocols, we would make sure that they're in place with distancing, wearing masks, and anything else that the health department asks us to consider. I do know that we would have to have some type of a limited number of tickets per graduate, so we'll work with the health department to find out what that can be. One really cool thing is I left an open-ended question for the students, and told them that they could put anything else that was constructive in that box. Had a lot of really good ideas from the students about the ways that we could set up where we could put the stage, and how we could set up that ceremony outside to hopefully maximize the amount of adults that we could spread out safely and still be able to host that traditional graduation. So any questions about kind of why we're considering a traditional graduation, or just any thoughts about that?
I certainly support that, and I think it is interesting you say the graduation. I think as a parent, it, it's important for the traditional graduation, but I also think it's very important for the kids to have that as well. So I understand the two, and I appreciate you proposing, asking the question in two different formats, so. And that doesn't surprise me from what I hear.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I do understand their hunger to have something normal.
Yes.
Think everybody would.
Agree.
Ready for that.
Yes, yes.
I really appreciate that you going out of your way to try and reach as many kids as you could, instead of just having like a select survey or select group, and, you know, I really appreciate that.
Not a problem, and it was, a lot of the kids are funny, they're like, Ms. Whitaker, we sound, we feel like we sound old telling you we want something traditional, but we just want something traditional, so it, they were great conversations, and it's always fun during Cyclone Hour to get around and talk to the students, so.
Thank you.
One of the things that we, we wanted to talk about this, and part of the reason why we didn't specify a number as of yet, is that as we have the conversation, the setup will be the determinant of how many people we can come, have come. So if we have a normal setup, basically you use one side of the stadium, and that's it. But if, if we do something within the center of the stadium, and you can use both sides of the stadium, or use the, the turf and, and find some ways to, to maneuver people around, we can do some different things. And we just haven't figured out exactly what that, that is as of yet. We'll continue to, to have some of those conversations with our county health department, make sure that we, we don't overextend ourselves in terms of the gathering population, because a lot of that will be how we funnel people in, and where they have to go, and those types of things. But it does give us an opportunity to do some different things there, and make sure that we can have a, a more traditional opportunity for us. And, and the other piece that we really don't know yet is come May, where, where we will be at in terms of gatherings and those types of things. So as we, as we continue to have those conversations, we'll continue to work through that, and do the best we can to, to make sure that people can invite the, the right people to come and experience their, their graduation.
And I know that students did talk about too, part of that traditional is having their teachers there, the band and the choir participating in that, like we've traditionally done. And so we really want to, like Dr. Cobb said, think about our space, and how can we use it wisely to be able to host that many people out there in a good traffic flow that will keep everybody safe.
And, you know, we did just spend a ton of money on turf and track, and, and I like your idea of saying, hey, let's utilize our whole resources, and again, you can funnel people on multiple exits, you know, things like that. So, great job.
Yep.
So while we're on the notion, let's talk about.
I have a question.
Susan's got one, sorry.
Susan, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I've got a question, are you all working with facilities or maintenance crowd too, to see what all is possible?
Yep, that, they will, we haven't brought them to the equation yet, and we wanted to survey the students and parents and just find out what we were thinking. Now that we've landed on the more traditional graduation, I'll absolutely be collaborating with Daryl and his crew to bring them to the table to figure out what we can and can't do, and, you know, if we need to rent just different items and more seating to make this possible, those are conversations that we would have with Dr. Cobb's and Daryl as well.
Yeah, so as we, as we bring Charlie in to talk about this, it, it brings up the other side of, of the celebration, which is promotion. At the elementaries, it's a little bit easier, because we can kind of break things down by, by class, right? So I think, I think most of the elementaries that have had discussions have wanted to keep the, the programs in their buildings. When they've communicated with parents, it's kind of been the parents farewell to the building as well. We'd initially discussed utilizing the PAC and, and doing some, some different things. But it seems like there's a, a real tie, specifically with parents, to have it in their building as a means to say goodbye to, to their possibly six years within those buildings. So elementaries will, will have a, a, something figured out, it may very well be that each class does a group of twenty or so kids, and then they have a break in between, disinfect to do all the things they need to do, and then bring in another group to go through the same process. But we'll, we'll definitively have a promotion. At the middle school, we've talked about some different things, and Susan brought up a, a great point. The amount of work that befalls upon our maintenance and custodial staff to put on a graduation is enormous. And, and the volume of kids that we have in the eighth grade right now is, is most likely going to exceed any capacity that we have inside of a building. We've talked about splitting the stage, and having kids in the, in the commons area, or having parents in the commons area, as well as the gym, and having kids maneuver through the stage so you could see on both sides of it. It still doesn't leave us with a great deal of capacity, especially if we have to have social distancing and all of those things. When we're outside, we have a little more latitude to do some things, because it's not a closed space with our county health department. Then if we're inside, and now we have closed spaces, we're held to a little bit of a, a different standard there. So as much as we have pushed back in the past about having eighth grade promotion at the stadium, one of the conversations that's currently existing is using May twenty-second as your high school graduation, but in the morning having middle school promotion. Whether it be early afternoon, or morning, or whatever it happens to be, but we save our maintenance and custodial staff the, the, the setup and teardown of twice, because it's, it's enormous. But, but being able to do something outside, giving our, our middle school parents and students the opportunity to engage in a, in a true promotion, but sharing that space, at least in, in, in this pandemic, is not something that we've typically done, but would provide an opportunity for us to have more patrons involved in our eighth grade promotion.
I think the, the conversation that we've had is, and again, like Dr. Cobb said, we've pushed back about trying to separate graduation from promotion for a variety of reasons, but I think what we got to is we owe it to our kids and to our families to do everything possible that we have at our disposal to give them as much as we can, especially given the circumstances. So that's certainly a, a conversation that we're having right now.
Any questions about graduation or promotions?
I echo that, keeping the promotion, you know, and because when we funnel our kids through, I know that was, is special to them. I know it's special to grandparents, you know, there's just something about that eighth grade promotion that's important. So whatever you come up with, I, I certainly echo, whether it's the same day, or whatever it is, I echo that, that's important to keep just as much as it is graduation.
I, I just, I didn't grow up with an eighth grade graduation, so that wasn't, I'm not used to that. But I've heard it is important, you know, to a lot of people, but just listening to you, and then thinking about, you know, continuing on, encouraging kids to continue in high school, get to graduation, and increase our graduation rate. I think that you have a great opportunity using that same setup, be like, you know, this is, it's happening, the same, same spot later today, you know, remember this feeling, keep working toward it, I think there, there's a lot of potential there.
I'd just like to thank you guys for continually to think outside the box and be innovative of, you know, all you have to do is watch the news, and I feel like us here inside this district, we're still pushing forward when some are having to go backwards, so.
It does do a couple of things for all of you. Typically, eighth grade promotion lasts about fifty minutes or so on a Wednesday night for you guys to come in. If it is on the Saturday of graduation, you're kind of talking about our board giving up their entire day to be there for promotion and graduation, it's certainly not mandatory that you're there. But it, it does mean a great deal to our parents, to our students, and to our staff to be supportive of that. Many of you were there for a full day la- last year, when it was really hot outside. I think I actually had to go home and change a suit in the middle of the day, because it was, it was pretty hot. But it would just be something to, to consider, and we'll work through who, who can make it during that time, and who cannot, and, and do those things, but. Anything else for graduation promotion?
I don't think so, thank you very much for all the work you're putting into this, it's great for our kids to know that it's coming, that whatever it's gonna be, it's coming, so that's good.
So the ne- the next conversation is about prom. And, and Mrs. Whitaker and I got together about, maybe three weeks ago now, to discuss prom and our, our need to do something for our students, specifically after they've had a full year of a lot of things not, not working the way that they were intending them to, as, specifically as seniors. If we were to not have prom this year, then we would have a, a senior class that would never have experienced a prom situation. They, they missed out as juniors, and we felt it was very important for us to provide a prom experience this year. So we had some conversations, I'll let Mrs. Whitaker talk about it, but we, we did present an idea to our students and to our parents for prom, I'll let Mrs. Whitaker walk through those things, and we'll talk about what the next steps with that might be.
So kind of after collaboration with the Franklin County Health Department, and figuring out what our limitations for prom would be, and what might we be able to do, and so we gather every day as a school community within the walls of Ottawa High School. And so after speaking with them and considering that we have more students together every day than would naturally would be at our prom, that we felt like we could still do some type of an event. Dancing is difficult, dancing is extremely difficult when you talk about keeping students socially distant for a long period of time. When we eat at lunch, those are a little bit shorter periods of time, and they're not delayed over, you know, ninety minutes is typically what dancing entails at prom. And so that becomes kind of the sticking point. One thing that students have talked about that means a lot to them, that the seniors are very sad that they didn't get to participate in, is that walk-up last year. That's a big deal in our community, it's fun to watch all the creative juices flowing, and watching how the kids like to enter prom on the red carpet. So the conversation was, that would be awesome if we can still do that, but what can we enter into, since dancing is going to be difficult? So we had a conversation about what would it look like if we offered a prom banquet? And so students would be able to do their walk-up, we would come to a banquet, if we could still utilize the bottle house, to where we could have kids sitting at tables in pods, and we can keep track of who's at which pod, so that would help with any potential contact tracing that is needed. And then within that dance, what the kids had talked about with their prom sponsors, we can still do prom king and queen with everybody there. And there's other, they were gonna try to come up with other activities, or events, or things that we could do during that dinner. The conversation then had, we had was, at the conclusion of that, working with the after-prom group to see what would it look like to still host some type of an after-prom. I know that a couple of the businesses in town weren't thrilled about hosting it there, so we, again, we don't normally do this, but talked about what would it look like if we opened up the high school and we utilized the South Gym, the North Gym, the Cyclone Room, and we have the Science Exploratorium, where we could host after-prom following all the guidelines that are set forth by the Franklin County Health Department. So that is what we have proposed to the students, and we're kind of, that's where we're at.
I wanted you all to be aware that, that we were trying to come up with something. The county has made it very clear that their recommendation, again, and I think we, we need to recognize that the term is recommendation. They will not come out and tell us that we can't, but we've had a, a very strong recommendation that dancing is probably not going to be the safest environment for our kids, and, and that's certainly understandable. Of the, of the four county schools to this point, none of them have, have made the intention to have a dancing-style prom. I think everybody's gonna, gonna follow that recommendation and not, not have a, a dance for prom, but try to do something different. Not quite sure what the other schools are doing at this point, but I think we may have caught them a little off-guard, that we were ahead of their conversation in terms of what we might do. The, the reality is, it's not gonna make everybody happy, and that, or I have no doubt that there, there will be a group of people that are not happy, that, that we won't have a, a dancing prom, or that we're recommending that we not have a dancing prom. Paola has gone through this already, they have a group of parents who have, who have basically taken over prom, and they're going to provide a private prom for kids, and it wouldn't surprise me that we see something similar here. I think it is important for us to recognize that, that the reason that we have been able to have the success in our schools that we've had, that we've been able to maintain when other schools have shut down, that we have not had quarantines the way that other schools have, is because we've very, been very consistent with our approaches and stuck to the guidelines that have been put in place to ensure the safety of our students, staff, and our schools. And, and that is where we still stand with, with prom, as, as we sit here in February, and don't really know what April is going to bring as of yet. So those may be some things that you begin to hear, but we wanted to make sure that you all were aware that as a, as a district, we are working on trying to do something for our kids for prom, that they can experience prom. It is not going to be the same, I don't know that there will be a, a school out there in the state of Kansas that has a normal prom, nor a normal graduation, nor any of those things that we would have had three years ago. So it's, it's what we have going for us right now, and we continue to communicate with, with students, with after-prom group, and with parents about how we can best navigate this, and still provide for our students as we move forward. So Kelly and I would answer any questions if you have them for us.
So would the walk-up happen like it used to traditionally happen here, or would it happen at the bottle house?
At the bottle house, like we did, so I guess that would have been two years ago now, which is so weird to say, my first year, when we had the prom at the bottle house, we did the drive-up, the walk-up there, and we would still collaborate with the police department to shut kind of those streets down. What would have to be different is we couldn't have a mass gathering there like normal. In the past, the bottle house has worked with us to putting that on Facebook Live, there's also things that we can do, we have a Facebook page. We have very talented students that usually help us on that day, so we can find a way to make sure that we are still allowing patrons and parents and grandparents to view that, even though they might not be able to be downtown to be a part of that.
Yeah, my only concern was, logistically, in the pandemic we're in, would it be easier to execute that by going back to the walk-up? Being at OHS, you have the Cyclone Room, big space, two gyms, big space. I just worry about if we have a banquet in a pandemic at the bottle house, do we have enough volume of space to get that number of students in there?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be my concern.
Okay, no, it's something for us to think about.
I will tell you that I have voted a lot, a lot of things on the board, okay, in the last year, and I have been reminded of only one vote, and one motion, okay? And I will tell you, you think graduation's important?
Yeah.
You think promotion's important? There is nothing more important than prom, okay? And if there's one vote that I will not vote on this year, I will abstain if we're going to quote-unquote cancel prom, okay?
And that's why we've been trying to think outside the box and come up with something that we can do for the students.
I just returned from Udoa and watched ten girls bump and rub and play woman-to-woman basketball, I've seen wrestlers wrestle. I think we can figure it out, so thank you for figuring out something to do, you know, and maybe, you know, there's even a dance component you can do, but even if there isn't, there's something we can do that we don't cancel prom, so.
Absolutely.
I will not vote to cancel prom this year.
Well, I like the idea of the banquet to where even figuring out somehow to have something catered, even if it was at OHS, you have a lot of space to spread everybody out.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm just sitting here smiling underneath this mask about the banquet, because when my mother was in high school in the nineteen forties, they had banquets.
I think that's how prom originally started.
Goes around, comes around, huh?
I mean, we could. I mean, we could always bust out the line dancing, but.
We would need you to come lead it. I can't help with that.
I'm, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, but for real, I really was just kidding. Anyhow, what is the date of prom?
Prom is April 17th.
Thank you.
The coldest, rainiest Saturday in April.
Typically, yes, that's how it has been in my experience of being here. Yeah. So, and I will be meeting with the group of juniors that, that run prom, the committee. They typically meet every Friday and so we didn't have the meeting this past Friday. They'll be meeting again this Friday. And then I know that there is a group of parents that want to meet with me as well. They've invited me to a Wednesday evening at 6:30. I'm unfortunately not able to make it, so I will work with scheduling a time with them as well to see what they're thinking and kind of where they are. So we can try to collaborate to provide our students with the best opportunity as possible, given the, the recommendations that are, that have been set forth by the Franklin County Health Department.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing that information so that we all, as well as the public, can be aware of what's going on with that. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Cobb, would you like me to step back in here?
I'll give it back to you.
Okay, all right. So there have been some questions as to tier and advisory and just kind of what exactly it is and, and what its purpose is. And Mr. Stoltenberg and Mrs. Whitaker are both going to give us a little presentation on that and be available to answer any questions. This is just a discussion topic for tonight. So Mr. Stoltenberg, welcome again.
Thank you. And Dean, if you could put my, the OMS presentation up. Thank you. Yep, that's it. All right. Well, thank you guys. And like Ms. Dandrio said, there've been some questions about just kind of what, what advisory and tier look like, the purpose of it and kind of some of the, the data and things that we have to back up kind of the programs as they exist. I'll go through advisory first. So as it stands, it's set up as 20 minutes each morning, first thing in the day. It is designed to act kind of as a soft start for students prior to entering into the core content. One of the big components of advisory that we, that we have pushed is this notion of looping and mentoring. So that each student would come in and they'd have an advisor that would work with them for all three years that they're here, that would act as that mentor, that go-to person that they might need during their time here. So some of the items that we address in advisory during this timeframe is our SABR's data, which is our social emotional screening data through FastBridge. We'll do community building, so doing different team building activities, again, trying to create that family atmosphere within that advisory. We'll have service projects, so some advisories will take on. So for example, in December, we had a food drive that one group decided to do. We'll also work through Zello and some of our individual plans of study through advisory, as well as focusing on some of the social emotional learning and wellbeing of our kids. The data that we would use to kind of pull out to show that there's been at least some improvement from that social emotional side of things is our Kansas Communities That Care data that has been consistently positive over the last several years. Another thing that we used with advisory this year, if you remember at the beginning of the year, we held conferences for parents to come in to try to explain just what hybrid learning was going to look like. And so we brought them in and the advisor was the one who led those conferences with those parents. And for the sixth graders, the incoming sixth graders, they were the one that gave the tour of the school, since our incoming sixth graders had missed all of that in the previous spring. One of the limitations to advisory, however, and this is something I know that's been brought up as a concern by, by some of you, is that because it is soft, it has a sort of a flexible model, so to speak, it can be up to individual teachers to truly maximize the time. And when we talk about looping and mentoring, I, I think suffice it to say that there are some teachers that are better at being a mentor or building relationships than others. And I think that comes naturally to some folks, especially in the secondary world. And so sometimes, depending on who that instructor is, it may not maximize the experience of advisory as others, which is something that I would say is one of those limitations to that piece of time. As far as tier goes, tier is kind of, has a dichotomous existence. So I'm going to speak first to the intervention component of tier and then kind of what the other side of tier is, which I think is what some of the concern is. So from the reading intervention side, we have six sections of reading intervention that is done through a full class period. So I should say, I should start by saying tier is a full class period, not just a 20-minute timeframe. We have in each grade level, two sections run by our ELA teachers, as well as Renee Stewart, who's trained in this, to run a, a reading intervention based off of a screener via MAP or FastBridge. So we would pull the students that with the greatest level of reading intervention needs for each grade level, pull those out into two sections, one section being fluency and one section with comprehension and vocabulary. And something that I would show here, and if you look in the box that's in here, is that the reading intervention itself, the data flushes out that it has been very successful and it's something that we're really proud of. So looking up here, our current seventh grade cohort, so who would have received the treatment as the reading intervention as sixth graders, and then again, as the beginning of the seventh grade year, saw a 10 and two-thirds percentile increase on their average, on average, on their MAP from the fall of 19 to the fall of 20. Now, this is an average, meaning some students did better, some students did worse, but we still saw that significant increase. And so for those of you at home who maybe aren't familiar with what a percentile rank is, percentile shows the ranking of how a student achieves in comparison to everybody else that has taken the test, not just within our schools, but within everybody, you know, in the country that has taken it. So when I see a 10 and two, two quarter, excuse me, two-thirds percentile rank, that means that our students aren't just increasing their achievement, but they're increasing it at a rate 10% greater than the general population. Our current eighth grade students, same thing, roughly nine and a half percentile increase. So we're really proud of those metrics and we, we believe that the data shows that the reading intervention itself works. But like I said, it's a dichotomous existence. And so in order to facilitate that timeframe, we have found what do we do with our rest of our population in terms of how do we provide some kind of meaningful time during this? And so for the last several years, as long as I've been here, tier has been used for those that are not in the reading intervention component, to use for grade checks. They get help from teachers. We had a, a pretty robust travel system up until COVID and now we've had to tighten the traveling down a little bit where they could go get, work with other students or get help from teachers. But ultimately, it works largely like a study hall. A couple of things that aren't up here that the tier time has been used for as well is it's when we'll do assemblies to try to protect that core time. It'll be when the high school counselors come over to do presentations for our eighth graders and those kinds of things. But like what you can see on here, and this is the reality of it, the, the significant limitation to this particular model is that it's difficult for us to maximize time for our students who maybe don't need that academic help. So those students that already have their homework done, that really don't need to go see a teacher. So what do we do to make sure that that time is maximized for them? We've tried things in the past such as utilizing CNN 10 or extension activities or free reading and those things. But I mean, if we're being honest with ourselves, we're just trying to find ways to make it some sort of academic time for kids. And so I think one of the things that we recognize is that there is a need for us at the middle school to look at a reformation of our tier system as it exists, really focusing on what is it that's working and what is it that we can do to maximize that time. Knowing that if we do take away from some of that study hall time, there is going to be some, some loss for some of our students as well who count on that time to get their homework done and do those things. But when I see 10.667 percentile ranks for, for some of the kids receiving the reading treatment and for other kids it not being a necessarily robust use of their time, it's certainly something that we have to consider as a middle school. So, any questions for me?
You know, I think it's apropos, Mr. Cobb knows this. I tried to pull this up on the screen. It's blank. Okay? Let me tell you what my personal belief of tier advisory is. It's 352 hours of wasted education time in my kids. And I can't believe, I can't think of any other program that we do that is so just under, underachieving. And so I'm pretty passionate that we scrapped the program. And I'm not saying it doesn't help some, but I've had many conversations over the years. I think it's one of the few things we do. I think we do a lot of things great in this district and I want to highlight those and I want to bring them out. But this is not one of them. And I know you're saying that some, there are some teachers that don't know how to utilize it and I, I get that. There's, you know, and all that. But you're, probably your best comment you just made, if you just want to be honest with each other, let's just be honest, this is a disaster. And so I welcome your, your openness to say, hey, you know what? It hasn't worked in the past. We need to move forward in a different direction. And I'm not saying that, I'm, I'm not an always or never. So I'm not saying there hasn't been some good come out of it. But I think the by and large part of tier and advisory has not been as beneficial as we had implemented something else. So I'm 100% in your court and Mrs. Whitaker's court. I'm trying to be positive. I was pretty passionate. Ryan probably knows this. I'm trying to put the positives spin on it. So anything you can do to abolish it and do something else, I'm all in favor of. But the current tier and advisory is a horrendous program, in my opinion.
That's fair. I would say that, you know, you, you talk about it being a disaster. I would recognize that, that for some students, I would guess that your children might fall into that space where we don't have that need for academic help or that piece of time and that maybe isn't a good use of their time. And that goes back to what we talk about, is making sure that we maximize that time for kids and we certainly recognize the need to do that. I mean, we do see that for a number of our kids, especially those receiving the reading treatment, we've seen significant gains on our MAP assessment scores. But yes, I, thank you. I appreciate your commentary.
But, but I also think it's important to recognize that there are staff who don't, I mean, it's just not for a student. I mean, it's a body of time that, you know, 20 minutes is just valid, and not just for one student. I'm talking about the whole classes away. So I, I think what I'm trying to be gentle and nice about, I think it's the whole student population. So, but thank you for looking at it and thank you for abolishing it and bringing something different.
Thank you for your comment.
Are there any other questions or comments for?
I, I did have a couple of questions. You said there are six sections. Again, mine was blank too, so I can't bring up everything that you had there. You said there were six sections of the reading, oh, right, the, the grade level in tier.
Correct.
And tier is the one at the end of the day?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So how many students does that touch?
About 40 students per grade level.
Forty per grade level?
Correct.
So like 120 kids?
Correct.
And how many kids are in the middle school?
About 550 or so this year.
Yikes.
Yep. And that's why, like we said, I think we recognize that the current system as it is, isn't maximizing time for all of our kids. And I think if we could find a way to, again, provide the reading intervention treatment for all students, I think that would be a, a certain positive step in the right direction. I think part of this is that we have determined that we need to access reading intervention for our lowest students. But the reality is, is that I think all of our kids could benefit from some kind of additional reading instruction.
Another question I, I had was how long have we been doing tier in this model?
So that would probably be a better question for Dr. Cobb. This model's existed since I've been here. So this is what, what it was when I came. I, my understanding, Dr. Cobb has stated that this was not always the model, that it had been more of a, where we had in a tier pulled out for a shorter period of time, sort of out of the main schedule. It wasn't a full class period. But for as long as I've been at Ottawa Middle School, this has been the way that it's been designed.
How many years is that?
This is my fourth year.
So.
I think the real answer is too long we've been doing tier and advisory, but that's just my opinion.
And then again, I apologize, I don't have the presentation. I was under the impression that grade checks is part of the goal of advisory, but here you have it on tier. So are we using both times for this?
Technically speaking, tier was the grade check timeframe, but we have found that our advisors, because they also are mentoring and working through that process with kids as a means of trying to keep them up, have also, would say, okay, yeah, let's take a look at grades and make sure you're doing things the way they're supposed to be doing. So is there potentially some redundancy? Yes.
Okay. And I would guess that it is probably not super effective because I'm also getting emails nearly weekly or every other week trying, from teachers trying to get us as parents to sit down and talk to our kids about their missing assignments and their grades.
Yeah, I think that we, anytime that we can reinforce that type of behavior, academic behavior at home as well as in the school is beneficial. I think asking us to sit down and talk through assignments and those things at home is to make, show that, you know, we're an active part of that, of our kids' education is important, but certainly we're attempting to do it as well here at school.
Okay, very well. And then you had mentioned community building and service projects. You did give the example of the food drive. What are other examples of those things that have been done during this time?
So like for advisory, you're saying? So like we'll have different, like you're talking about the service projects or?
Any examples of proof that that has been actually happening?
So.
Other than the food drive. I did get an email about the food drive.
Yeah. So we've also had other different donation type drives and things like that in the past. And I, I would have to look up those things. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I would have to take a look. I could certainly find some evidence for it and I'll forward it on to you.
Okay. I, I do have great concerns about these things. I know I can only speak for things that other, either other parents have told me or my own kids. I personally know that my kids are texting me before I can ever even get home from making my elementary loop and to get back home. They're already texting me like, what are you doing? Just trying to make conversation because they do absolutely nothing in advisory. And I, I've told Dr. Cobb, it, I know you said the students stay with the same one, but for some reason, one of my students does not have the same one. So I don't want anyone to think that it's a current teacher that I'm talking about. But I have been told by a previous advisory teacher of my students at the parent night, when we still had parent nights, that she would be my student's mother at school, saying that if she was running late and she just needed to brush her hair to be able to prepare for her day, that she could use that time to do that. If she just needed to cry to be able to get her day started, that she would sit in the classroom and just cry with her. And I really, I really don't think that is a good use of time, especially when I hear of talking about wanting to add on time to the day. That really concerns me, that we are wanting to take time from our families and time from our community, time from our students. A lot of students go to a job right after school when we have an, an entire hour of tier that is not being used, plus the 25 minutes, yet we want to keep them for more. I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I think we need to not only be good stewards of our community's money, but of our community's time and make sure that we're actually utilizing all the minutes that we have our students for. I, I, I'm glad to hear that we are going to, we're looking into changing it because I do think what we have is not working.
Sure. I, I appreciate your commentary. I would state that going back to advisory and I know that, that, sure that, that's your belief that that's not a good use of time as far as some of the, the emotional support piece of it. We do recognize that in a, in a community with over 50% free and reduced lunch, we have several individuals that need that additional person. They may not have that person at home, that person. And whether we went a little bit too far with superlatives in terms of crying and those types of things, I think the point was trying to be made that I'm a person that you can go to as a point of contact in that building and someone who cares about you.
Right. And that 50% is very important and I would never undervalue that. But we do have to make sure that we are also valuing the time of the other 50%. So I know that is a tricky balance, but I don't think that this is currently doing it. And I, oh, another, another issue I know that is happening that's not during that time is that kids are sitting out in the hallway while teachers are on some sort of like Zoom meeting or something and they have to close their doors. And so the kids are just sitting in the hall basically waiting for the day to start, but this is time that we're considered day.
So what, what you're referring to is due to the current pandemic, IEP meetings are having to occur virtually. And because of that and because of the pandemic, typically in a normal year, we would have students prior to school. They would come and meet in the team rooms and then teachers would be in their classrooms on their own. And so at that point, the teacher would be able to be part of that, that meeting. But when we're having an IEP, there might be, you know, confidential information being shared. And so what's happening is teachers are either trying to find a way to help their kids get into a space when, you know, to find either another teacher's picking them up or it's unfortunate to hear about the hallway type situation, but we're having to find a way to get creative in order to hold those types of meetings within a teacher contract time, but not within, you know, within earshot of kids, whereas personally, you know, confidential type material. But I, certainly the point is well taken. I appreciate it.
And I do understand that that is confidential and we would not want students hearing any of that information. I just think it goes to the point that's being made is that, that we're not utilizing the time that we have and yet we're wanting to add on more. So.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
I, I would like, Dean, could you go back to the advisory piece of this? I don't, I don't have this. We're not getting it.
So I'm not the only one. Okay.
But I was, I was on the site council when this advisory was being discussed and brought up. And I, I very much understand why it was put in place because of the social emotional needs of the kids. We also had something like this when I taught elementary school. We had a, a, a group. We divided the kids up. Everybody had their little group and it was so the kids would feel safe and secure in school. They could come to a group and that would be their person to come to or their, their peers to come to. And because they had that same They could come to a group and that would be their person to come to, or their, their peers to come to, and because they had that same person all three years that they were in the middle school, it would be very beneficial for their social and emotional growth, so I do understand where the advisory uh, was coming from.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for your comment.
Uh, Mr. Stolberg, I, from what I'm hearing and what I've heard prior to tonight's meeting, I, I think what really just needs to happen is we need to look back and make sure, like, we have an SOP for it, and that we are taking it maybe more serious, it sounds like to me, um, to make sure we're maximizing. I understand trying to have some of these times in the day. Uh, my student doesn't fall in this hardly at all, but I know there's other students that if we don't try to catch them during the school day to make sure that they get assignments done, or turned in, or, um, grades up, then we won't catch it once they walk out the building, and then graduation rates as it goes to the high school, and then some of these students just keep getting farther behind. I don't have the real answer of how we make sure we get this fifty percent and this fifty percent, but I have great, uh, faith that we will figure out a, a better way to improve on this.
I think any decision that we make is not going to be without some kind of consequence, certainly, and I think it's going to be up to us to, kind of the moral imperative is going to be to figure out how do we utilize the time most effectively for our kids, and how do we make that work? Um, and so, yeah, I mean, if, when we do, if we do move away from the study hall-style time, then we're gonna have to either find a way to build in time for those kids that need that time, or, uh, find ways to, to work through some study skills, or, and hopefully provide whatever supports we can get them to, to complete that work outside of school.
Or, you know, maybe we get really creative and do something like what we do at the high school with Cyclone Hour with lunch, where we can, some of these kids can navigate around there.
Yes, we do, yeah.
I just wanted to be, I just want to say that I understand that we have two spectrums of kids we're trying to encompass.
Absolutely, yeah.
One, the ones that don't really need the help, but keep pushing them, two, the ones that do need help, trying to catch them up and maintain.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
But we can't discount the social and emotional needs of these kids.
Absolutely not.
Especially middle school when they come in. I, I think we've got to, to be aware that some kids come to school absolutely fractured in the morning, and they need that mentor and that person that they know they can count on every day. I think that's really important.
I think, you know, I will definitely support that right now, because I have those kids.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, and, and I think too, not only is it necessary, but it's also state mandated. I mean, there is, are a lot of state requirements for that socia- social, emotional piece, I mean, that are required to have so many things completed, and, and we do have to have time for that, as to not take away from the core um, areas as well. Uh, but, Mr. Stolberg, I want to say you have changes in the middle school since you're, you've been there, and I know you can't change everything at once, and so I just appreciate you coming and, and saying, hey, this is where we're at, and I think we need to make some changes, and we're looking at changing this, and just kind of putting that out there for us, so we know to be looking for, uh, your plan that you're gonna put together, I'm sure, well, you and your team will come up with something great that will work well for our students, so.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
All right, good evening again. Um, so what I'm going to talk about is what advisory looks like at the high school. Um, and so I do hear a couple of the things that are kind of going on, and one thing I want to point out is that one of the reasons, two years ago, when I came to you all about revamping our bell schedule, and we looked at what Cyclone Hour could potentially look at, we also knew that there was a lot of state mandates on the table for individual plans of study, grade eight through twelve, heavy in the grades nine through twelve. Student-led conferences were coming down the pipeline, and we needed to problem-solve and process what is a way for us to do these things, um, and make it meaningful for everyone, meaningful for parents, meaningful for our students, and then engage our teachers in that process. So advisory was one of the things that came to the table. Um, you will see and you will find, not only around the state of Kansas, but around our country, that more and more secondary, uh, buildings, especially high schools, are going to some type of an advisory model. The reason is because all those topics that are covered there, that are, that are listed there that we cover during that time, we have to do those. So if we don't do it during a standard time of the day, then what my English and social studies and math teachers will tell you, I'm pulling in their classes, because those are the courses that all of my students take. Mostly, all of my ninth through juniors are in a math class. All of my kids are in an English class all four years that they're in high school, and then most of my juniors and sophomores are all in a social studies class. Um, and so that's why the advisory kind of came to be when we came a couple of years ago, to look at revamping our schedule. So where we came to be is advisory only meets one time a week, it meets for forty-four minutes on Fridays. Um, the top, the topics that we cover during that time, our students take their saber, Saber surveys, which is a social, emotional survey. We do our Kansas Communities That Care survey with our tenth graders and our seniors, we do our individual plans of study, and that's nine through twelve. Um, Zello activities are a large part of those individual plans of studies, and all of that information helps the students put their scripts together for their student-led conferences, and that's what we're doing right now. If you've looked at my newsletter, um, this, over the past two weeks, we've talked a lot about it as a staff, because all we're doing in advisory for the next four weeks are preparing for what are those student-led conferences, what are they going to look like, um, and engaging our students and our teachers as their advisors in that process. We have our assemblies during that time. Since I've been at Ottawa High School, assemblies are very important to us. If you tell my Renaissance students that I'm taking their assemblies away, um, you, we're gonna, they're gonna fight me, um, and they have been very upset this year because those things have looked different. So assemblies, putting them in that time, my first year at Ottawa High School, I cannot even keep track of the amount of times that we were changing our bell schedule for assemblies and just for different activities, and that was causing a lot of frustrations for all of my students, all the way from kids who need that structure and routine because of the needs of their IEPs, all the way up to my most gifted students, were just like, Ms. Whitaker, can the bell schedule ever stay the same, please? Um, and so that was another thing that went into our decisions on why we kind of selected Fridays with that forty-four minutes, so those activities could happen during that time as well. Um, we do a lot of social, emotional activities, um, in team building. Our students do door decorating contests throughout the year. We have, um, every advisory class is sponsoring a Build a Box right now for our mobile food pantry that's hosted at the high school. Mrs. Cohen and Mrs. Um, Steinball are sponsoring that. Um, we just do a lot of, at the beginning of the year, they're just like a, kind of a smorgasbord of activities the teachers are given, and they can kind of pick what they want to do um, within the lesson plan that's provided to do some of those team-building activities at the beginning of the year. Um, our accountability, I know that that has come up for a question, so there's a lot of things that I do as the instructional leader at the high school and with my team of other administrators and my counselors to hold kind of that accountability of everybody during that time. So what I like to say is at four, uh, when it's time, at ten oh one for advisory at Ottawa High School on Fridays, the students know it. They hear Mrs. Whitaker come over the announcements, and I set the tone for whatever that activity is for that day. Typically, it varies between grade level, depending on what we're doing. Sometimes we all are engaging in the same activity, kind of like our student-led conferences preparation that we're doing right now. So that, there is a schedule and lesson plans that are provided to teachers, the, um, Ottawa High School Counseling Department is responsible for those. They take a lot of pride in putting those together. They look at our Kansas Communities That Care survey, they look at our Sabers data, um, as well as we talk with the teachers about what are some of those social and emotional needs of our students. Um, and that's how they're selecting some of those lessons in the ancillary times when we're not doing student-led conferences and some other things. During that time, administrators and counselors, we are walking through, we are problem-solving with our teachers, we are making sure that the lessons are happening um, in all of our classrooms. If we have substitutes, sometimes we're covering and doing those lessons with the students, because we don't want them to miss out on whatever that information is that we are providing that week. Um, the announcements piece is where I kind of, kind of come on myself or one of the administrators every Friday, so everyone knows what we're doing. And then the students do get graded for this part of it, they do earn a quarter of a credit, so it's point one-two-five credits. What we've done since I've been here is every year, we kind of get together and we figure out what is this semester in advisory going to look like, and we communicate with the students as far as what are those expectations in order for you. It's a pass-fail grade, so they either pass or they fail. I will be honest with you, this year with the pandemic, it has been a little insane. Advisory met a lot more at the beginning of the year when we were in a hybrid schedule, because we needed to create an eighth period in order to have the half-days. Um, and so we did a lot of catch-your-breath days. Um, my advisory teachers do grade checks with, um, their advisory students at the beginning of Cyclone Hour um, every Monday, um, so that's not another advisory period, it's just a swing-by and check-in with your advisory teacher at the start of Cyclone Hour, and then the kids go do what they need to do. The other confusion right now with advisory is, because of our current pandemic that we're living in, our advisory teachers are kind of a holding tank, for lack of a better way to describe it, for our students during Cyclone Hour. We can't have all seven hundred of our students out and about, because contact tracing and doing some of the other recommendations by the health department are pretty difficult. Um, so what we do is we have half of our student body eating during the first section, session of Cyclone Hour, while the other half is with their advisory teacher, and we switch places. We've instituted a pass system, so students can still, uh, get a pass from a teacher to get extra help when needed. Teachers can still request students to come see them during that time. Um, what you'll find is I have a whole lot of teachers that are giving up their lunchtime, not that we make them do that, we don't require them, I tell them to take a lunch, but a lot of them give up that entire time, um, in order to be available for our students and help them. So students do see their advisory teacher right now more frequently. Um, Monday through Thursday, that is just Cyclone Hour, so that is extended hour of getting your homework done and doing the things that you need to do academically, whether that's to go see a teacher to take a test, or whatever that looks like, but Fridays, with that forty-four minutes is our true advisory period that we've had in our schedule the past, um, two school years. One of our limitations is we don't have a great system, we don't have a system at all, not gonna lie about that as far as tier goes, and to really make sure we're, we're helping remediate those students for those final four years before they enter their post-secondary. Um, a big solution to that is as we continue to look at our schedule at the high school, and we look at what a flex mod schedule looks like, which that is for a completely different conversation, because it's pretty complex, but that would allow us to build in time for students who need extra remediation while allowing other students to take potentially additional courses um, and engage themselves further in academic areas of interest with all of our career pathways, maybe some of our college courses. We have tons of students right now that are taking online college courses, which is awesome, through Allen Community College, and it would allow students who don't need the remediation more time to engage in those types of academics, while we can spend time remediating some of our other students that need that. Um, and so that's some of our limitations, and that's a, a solution for us as we continue to travel down the course of the next few years, and really talk about as a staff and a community what that might look like, um, instituting a flex mod schedule at the high school. So I will open up to questions, um, but that is a little bit about advisory at the high school.
We have had increasing graduation rates at Ottawa High School. How much do you think this has helped increase those graduation rates?
That's a great question, and I will tell you immensely, I think that Cyclone Hour and advisory go hand in hand. I think having that mentor, um, for some of our students, that person that follows them through the course of their four years at the high school has been huge. I have, most of the students that have been there have now at least had the same advisor for three years, um, if not more, depending on who they were with the year prior, I was, um, prior to me becoming the principal at the high school. Um, without advisory and without Cyclone Hour, I don't know that we're catching those students during the day, um, and that we're finding that, building them up and allowing them to show us how successful they can be in whatever their talents are, whatever their pathway of passion is, and really earn, doing more than just earning those credits, but really gaining the knowledge that they need to show us to help them be sustaining citizens in whatever they choose to do when they leave Ottawa High School. I truly believe that.
I, I will echo you. I think when Cyclone Hour started, it was tremendous, and, and, and I understand COVID's changed. Okay, so I recognize that. Um, but I would encourage you to move the high school as quick as you can safely back to that model. I'm not gonna use your words against you, but you are exactly right. I think now it's a holding pattern, and I think what's happened, maybe you can't do anything else, so sometimes just things happen, right? Okay, we can't change it, but I do think you're right. I think we started out with a phenomenal program, it really worked well. Um, people were getting, students were able to move throughout the building as they needed, and all that. I do agree with Linda, I think that it uh, aided in many things, just on graduation rates, I think just overall, learning more throughout the day, right?
Absolutely.
Have less stress at night for, uh, homework, multiple things, right? Finishing up tests and all that. COVID hits, and I think you're right, we've become a holding pattern, and I think that's watered that down tremendously. And I'm not blaming the staff, and I'm blaming the students. After a while, you just, there's not much more you can do, right? So you are, you're right, you're in a holding pattern. Thus adds to that quote-unquote unproductive time I'm referring to. I go back, if we can play basketball, if we can play wrestling, if we can do that, surely we can start to loosen that up and allow that to go back. I think you are correct, I think there is some passes being issued, but not maybe as frilly as people think.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it totally does.
There's still some hesitancy there, and I think as soon as you can get us back to what Cyclone Hour used to be, I think the better off we are, and, and I think we've proven that COVID isn't the big issue in the student population as we maybe early on was concerned about. That doesn't mean to do away with all safety protocols, it's not what I'm saying, but, uh, I just want to echo that the quicker we get back to that, the better off we are.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, and that's something, so there's a lot of schools that do something similar to Cyclone Hour. So not only working with our own students and evaluating our process and where we are with COVID and what that looks like, I work with other schools as well. I will tell you that all of my principal colleagues look at me like I'm crazy, even with what we are doing, um, because they haven't figured out how to safely do that. One thing, and I've sent this home to parents, and I'm very transparent with my students about, I need them to help me. We don't do a super-good job of following the protocol during Cyclone Hour, um, and we need to do a better job of that, especially if we're going to kind of gather in that space as masses, um, so I appreciate that, and that is something that we talk about the kid, with the kids all the time, um, that once we can start following some of those protocols better during Cyclone Hour, as I absolutely agree with you, the quicker we can get back to that being Cyclone Hour with, with what it was meant to be, I know that that's going to be more beneficial for our students, and just in our current pandemic, we've got to keep reviewing where we are. Right now, we are doing enrollment during Cyclone Hour advisory for February. Typically, that was taken out of our social studies and our English classes. One thing we talked as a building leadership team is that our students have lost a tremendous amount of instructional time when we were in the hybrid setting last spring into what we're doing right now. So we were going to try to open things up a little bit more, but when we realized enrollments here, we normally do that by gathering in masses or going into our social studies, or, excuse me, our social studies and English courses. We did decide to do that during Cyclone Hour, um, and have kind of a Cyclone Hour enrollment is what we're calling it, and so we have a plan as a building leadership team, we review that, kind of like Dr. Cobb's does with the gating criteria. Every two weeks, we talk about it at our meetings, where are we at, how is everybody feeling, well, how are the kids doing? Um, and our goal is to try to get back to what Cyclone Hour was meant to be originally.
And do you think we can do that yet this year?
I'm hopeful. I think I wanna, I think we need to get through February in enrollment, and I am hopeful um, that we can continue to kind of monitor where we are and definitely have those conversations for March after spring break, leading into those last final eight weeks of school.
Because what I just want to encourage is, I think there's still fear out there, I mean, school districts, Chicago is scared to death, come, even go back. We're back, we're educating, I think that, I just don't want fear to dominate, uh, you know, our policies, so I appreciate you saying that you're gonna take what's best for our students, and I think, uh, and leading them into getting back to normal is good, so thank you.
Harold, I've always said this to my teachers through this whole thing, this whole pandemic, what is best for our kids isn't always super comfortable for us right now, um, because I agree with you, right? Everybody has a different threshold with COVID-nineteen and getting our kids back in school, and so we've tried, my building leadership team, I think, probably gets a little exhausted from me, because we really try to review all of our policies and our practices through this. Every, we meet about bi-weekly, um, to make sure that we're constantly doing what's best for our students while doing exactly what you said, keeping with our guidelines and being safe, but not letting that fear completely overrun us, um, but making sure that we're remaining safe and doing the things we need to do to keep those protocols in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Dr. Cobb's, this will probably be for you too, it'd be interesting to have these two maybe get some data that backs up over the years, kind of what this has, either pros or cons, what it has done for us with our students, and what maybe has kind of fallen off. Um, whether that's using some of the MAP scores or stuff like that, I think would be a lot of help for some of us up here.
Absolutely. Any other questions, Lydia?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Um, of course, I don't have high school, so I'm not quite as familiar with the Cyclone Hour as some of, as most of the other people. Um, so prior to this, the teachers ate lunch during this time?
Yeah, so do you, can I explain a little bit about what Cyclone Hour looks like? Is that kind of what you're wondering, or?
Well, I'm just, yeah, so is this when students get king, they get help with their?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so a teacher, every teacher has a, their, um, twenty-five minute of uninterrupted lunch, so within that hour, every teacher has a sign on their door. So within that hour, every teacher has a sign on their door that's usually green or red. And what that signifies is whether that teacher allows food in their room or not. And there's a letter A and a letter B. So a teacher will tell the students when they're available. So if they are assigned to eat a lunch, they put a line through that and the students know that, hey, I need to eat my lunch because I can go during B session to see maybe Mrs. Miller, my math teacher. I have a lot of teachers that make themselves available that entire time. That was easier to do prior to COVID when they could eat in their rooms while they're helping kids, right? I used to eat my lunch walking around during cyclone hour. And so that was a little bit easier. And so now, my teachers are, what you find them doing is yes, they are taking their thirty-minute lunch and they're not available for students because they're going somewhere safe to remove their masks to eat. Or I have some teachers that I know are choosing to just be available for kids because that's what they do, and they're eating their lunch probably after school or whenever that they have time, maybe their planned times after cyclone hour or whatnot.
Because you have, so you have here no tier.
Correct, that we don't have a tier system at the high school. There was one prior to me getting there. When we looked at our graduation rate data and when we looked at instituting something like cyclone hour, that was what we moved out of the schedule to put in cyclone hour. And then that's when the forty-four minutes of advisory time was created. And so that's where, that's, that's a huge area of need for us at the high schools, finding time without taking from our core content areas because our classes are only fifty-two minutes. So without pulling time from them, how can we provide those remedial supports for the students who need them?
So my next question is what goals do you want to occur during tier?
If we get there, if we have that. So what I, what I see that happening, if we're talking about tier in a flex mods type schedule, what I, what I think that looks like are that we have remediation for students who need that, but then we have opportunities for students to take additional courses. So right now, a student is limited to take seven courses a day. And so if we had a space like tier in a flex mod type system, a student could take more than what is offered. That would be something that's available to them. So they would be able to enhance their academics in an area of passion, to take an extra college course because they have time within their schedule to do that. If kind of, in the short term between now and then, if we were given the opportunity to have some extra time with our students, whatever that might look like, excuse me, to provide something like tier at the high school. What I see that looking like is remediating our students who need that based upon their MAP and FastBridge scores. And we have a lot of assessments that we give at the high, post-second, or the high school level preparing kids for post-secondary, like ACT is just a good example. Some of my students engage in ACT prep classes, a lot of them don't. And so there are things that all of our students can learn from ACT prep questions, some test-taking strategies. There's other things that we can do with students who don't need that remediation. Again, I think that structure of how our advisory is where we provide those lessons and we kind of manage what that time looks like. It would be important that whatever a tier looked like at this high school, that we are helping our teachers manage that and helping them figure, make sure, and it's not figure out, make sure that we're looking at our data from all the assessments that we give kids and providing them experiences and opportunities that they need.
So it would not be a study hall type of environment?
Correct, that's not how I would envision it, correct. Because that's, to me, that's what cyclone hour is for, right? Like what Harold is saying, that, that is really what cyclone hour is. And that is part of what's kind of crunched us right now with the COVID-19 pandemic because kids don't have that entire hour to dictate. Like Harold and Julie could tell you, and now Chris has got a daughter there, and Chris's daughter hasn't experienced it yet, but it's really an hour where they dictate what they need. They eat lunch when they want within that hour, they go see teachers when they need to in that hour. We do have a system of accountability, thanks to Mr. Gurrell in the tech department, where teachers can assign kids and we can help hold those kids accountable that aren't truly utilizing it for the reasons they need to. But I wouldn't see it as being like a study hall. It would be an academically focused time for all of our students.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Questions? All right, thank you very much.
You are welcome. Sorry, I started coughing at the end.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine. Okay, so next up, Dr. Cobb's is gonna present some ideas, just to kind of throw them out there that we can start thinking about for use of the ESAR funds. So maybe just maybe five, five or ten minutes here to, to go over those things.
Yep, so a couple of things that have been discussed here and maybe a misunderstanding about what tier is, is that tier is not a study hall, nor was it ever intended to be a study hall. Tier is actually identified to be a time in which we implement a state mandate, which is multi-tiered systems of support, and subsequently, that's where the name tier comes from. It has morphed into something that is a little bit different and provides study hall opportunities that obviously we, we are in the process of reevaluating and determining what those needs are. So in terms of ESAR funds, if we could just take a look at the data piece there, I wanted to show you a couple of things. We have reading interventions in place at all levels with the exception of the high school. And subsequently, you can see that in terms of MAP, with the exception of second grade, and remember, this is coming into the fall, these second graders would have lost out on seven weeks of first grade reading instruction. And subsequently, they're behind, that much is obvious. But you can see for the first time probably ever in our district, every grade met its intended growth on MAP assessments. That is in part because we have tiered intervention K through eight. If you look at where we don't have tiered intervention in terms of math, you can see a very different system, right? To which very few of our classes actually met their intended growth on MAP assessments. Dean, if you continue to scroll down there, you begin to, to look at the next piece. So just because we met growth does not mean that our students are where they need to be or on grade level. And so if you remember, we talked about closing the achievement gap. Again, in the areas in which we have tiered intervention, we see that we have closed or risen above that achievement gap in nearly every grade level at nearly every building. You see just a couple there that are still lagging behind. Typically, your second grade class, and again, we identified the second grade class even on MAP assessments as they came into this notion as being behind in part because they lost out on seven weeks of predominant reading instruction. Where you see us falling way behind is where we do not have tiered intervention, which is in mathematics, right? And so you see that, that column there that's in the middle that still has us substantially behind. Dean, if you'd scroll down from there. So here is a different idea behind MAP. This is your reading. We want to see a lot of blue. We want that blue to be above eighty percent. And you can see that it's not there yet. So certainly, we still have some room for growth there. But if you compare this to where our assessment scores were at when we started this process three years ago, it's significantly better. And part of that is because of our tiered intervention system and the pieces that we've put in place. If you look at our math, it's substantially worse with most of them hovering around the fiftieth percentile versus the seventy-fifth percentile. All of that is intended to bring you to the point of why tiered instruction is predominantly important, specifically when we start talking about the use of ESAR funds, which is intended to impact students who have been impacted by COVID. That is all of our students. Our data would show that it's all of our students that have been impacted by COVID. Twenty minutes of time is, is, is interesting and something that we should consider. Over the course of the last two years, we have taken out what in essence will be ten minutes of the student contact day to add four days to the calendar year. Five minutes which takes place this year, five minutes which takes place next year. So when we start talking about twenty minutes of additional time, you're really only talking about ten minutes of additional student time from where we were at two years ago. Our, our buildings will end next year. Garfield and Sunflower will end at three fifteen, Lincoln is at three twenty-five, OHS and OMS are at three o'clock. We're talking about an additional twenty minutes on top of there where our schools would release at three thirty-five, three forty-five, and three twenty. Those staggered times are to impact busing and be able to pick buses up and do all of those things. When, when we start looking at what our reading intervention currently looks like, just so that you could, and Dean, if you could go to the oral reading one now. This is what happens when we take our, our MAP assessments, we start looking at students in terms of these four quadrants and the interventions which occur there. So when they take the screener and then they take the, the assessment that's associated, after the screener identifies them, there's another assessment that's associated with this, they are placed in one of these four quadrants. If they are at or above the benchmark on our screener, they go to an enrichment program. If they are accurate but not fluent, they go into a fluency program. We start building on their pace of reading, ensuring that they can begin to read faster while not missing out on comprehension. If they're inaccurate and not fluent, you see that they go down there and they begin to, to build on the beginning pieces of reading, which is phonics or phonemic awareness, depending on which grade level you're in. And if we're fluent but below benchmark in comprehension, we're reading, we're impacting comprehension of vocabulary. These are defined pieces of intervention that have been in place for the last ten years. And when we implement them appropriately during the time span that we, that we do, we have seen that increase in student achievement. Mr. Stoltenberg was talking about ten percentile points, nine and a half percentile points when we do this. The problem is that we haven't impacted all students this way, right? So when we implemented the tier process for middle school students, it impacted them heavily. When we don't find something else for them to do, it creates consternation amongst our board. And subsequently, we have the conversations that we've had here publicly tonight, which is not appealing to most people, right? So that's something that we got to figure out. But the tier process itself, when implemented appropriately, certainly works well. So as we start taking a look at how that intervention is built in, it is already built into the elementary day. The reading intervention takes place in the core reading time. So as they provide their core instruction, the interventions take place within that time. There's not a need to provide more time for it during the day. At the middle school, we, we talked about reevaluating the tier system and, and creating a different schedule. You guys saw that in your update as a, as an idea of what we could do. The high school is a little bit different. The true tier process would happen when we implement a flex mod schedule, but we can do some things as it exists. If reading is occurring during the day and we can address the needs that currently exist at the middle school within tier to identify specific reading strategies, it does not impact what we need for mathematics. Mathematics is our greatest concern in terms of academic achievement, and you can see that based upon our scores. The additional twenty minutes that we would ask for use with ESAR funds would be specific to math intervention in a tiered process, not intended to be a study hall. Every student gets reading intervention, every student. Every student gets math intervention, every student. If they are above grade level, we talk about enrichment activities specific to reading, specific to mathematics. Not you're done with your homework, find something else to do or, or sit there and, and mess around on your Chromebook, whatever it happens to be. Those two time spans for tiered intervention would be specific to every student and identified in a, in a means that every single student had an expectation for those twenty-minute blocks of time. There's still a lot of work that we, we would need to do here. The point of, of addressing it with the board tonight is we have one point seven million dollars in ESAR funds that we have to address, right? And certainly, we have some issues with, with academic achievement, specifically with math. But certainly with reading, there are some gaps that we need to address there as well, and we can always get better at reading. And we need to begin to start figuring out how we're going to utilize those funds to impact those students. There's, there is much that has to occur. If we make a change in the school day, we got to make sure that we negotiate that. We got to make sure that it, that it works with, within the negotiated agreement. We got to make sure that we communicate with parents. We got to make sure that we find the appropriate intervention materials. We got to make sure that we train staff appropriately as we go through it. We have to make sure we communicate to our public about what our intention is and how it's going to impact them and the length in which it would, would occur. All of those things are important for us to, to recognize as we move through this, especially when we start talking about the approximate cost of two hundred and twenty-eight licensed staff members having an additional twenty days added, or additional twenty minutes each day added on to a contract, which would equate to about eight total days. It would, it would cost our district five hundred and forty-five thousand and some change. If you include the hundred and sixteen classified staff members that would work along that, it's another ninety-three thousand dollars and some change totaling about six hundred and forty thousand, just less than six hundred and forty thousand dollars. That is substantial. But again, when we've implemented a tiered system appropriately, we have seen dramatic increases in our student achievement. And subsequently, that's what we're looking for in terms of this process with ESAR funds. It has been the one that our, our leadership team and building principals have attached themselves to the most. We have had some initial conversations with OEA president. I think that there is some, some support there to, to go down this path if it is the best choice for our district. But I want to make sure that in having this conversation, that, that we don't look at our frustrations with tier and advisory because of the manner in which they are implemented, that we, just because the name is similar, that we're talking about tier, that we, we misidentify how we would use tiered instructional supports to meet the needs of our students who are still well below grade level in some areas. So that is the initial idea that we have for the use of our ESAR II funds. And I would be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
I, I just have one thing to say. I am all for targeting these things. I'm all for catching up these gaps. I have a second grader, so I'm well aware of the gaps that have occurred from last year. I'm front and center to, to see it. I just do not think that we need any time added on to the day. Just for an example, the bus comes by my house at six forty-five in the morning. I'm not sure what time it comes by in the afternoon because I'm usually busy and don't pay attention. However, today I happened to leave my house and I ran into the bus that had not even made it to my house where it would drop off my kids if they did at four twenty-one. So that's nine hours and thirty-six minutes right there. So they have the one twenty-five minute lunch period that they can eat. As, to my knowledge, we are not allowing snacks at the elementary. I know there is discourage to bring in snacks, you know, currently and things in the older grades. I mean, I think that this is a, a concern to, to keep them any longer than this. I know I mentioned earlier that a lot of kids do leave work and go straight to a job. We keep talking about, you know, the poverty situation that we have. So there are a lot of families that, that need that, they, they have to have that job. There's a lot that want that job for the older students. And I just think that we do a great job in our district of coming up with solutions. And I think that, that we could rearrange our day to get this targeted effort within the day that we have a type of like a title math situation like we do currently with the title reading where we pull them out. I think that we can really use these funds to, to do that without adding time on to the day.
So I guess I go both ways. And, and I'll be interested to see what your proposal ultimately comes. Because I think you are correct. When, when tier is done right, and cyclone hour is done right, pre-COVID, they're phenomenal programs and I see the benefit. I do think there is a gap, and so I, I echo that. I do worry the day is long. However, I understand we have cut five minutes off as part of that, those decisions. So I do think that that is a very valid point. And I do like that you're saying it's targeted to math and it's targeted to all students, okay? And I think that's phenomenal, okay? And I do like, yes, I was pretty vocal on the middle school and high school tier deal. But if we're also revamping that as well, I think it's a unique opportunity to take a look at many different programs and ask, you know, how is the best way that we can move forward serving, okay, our students? And if this is the model that we need to look at, then I'm, I'm very much open to addressing all of it. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that it's something I hadn't considered until you brought it up and, and something that, quite frankly, if done right. I do agree with, the only downside that I'm struggling with is, you know, the adult workday's eight hours and now we're potentially exceeding that for the kids. But if it's meaningful instruction, as you're saying, which I think we can certainly use, and math is a core subject, I think we could all agree to math is very important. So I guess as, I'm trying to weigh this and, and not we're voting tonight, but I, I think it is an interesting concept that we take a look at and saying, how is the best way we can give twenty minutes of purely math intervention for all students, as you said, in multiple levels? So I, I'm, I'm open to and kind of encouraged and excited to hear, you know, how that rolls out going forward.
I think one of the things that is important for us to remember is that, and you all already know this, right? We missed seven weeks of school. We had nearly nine
We missed seven weeks of school. We had nearly nine weeks of hybrid in which the school day was condensed to a half day. If we could fix those things in a normal school day, we wouldn't have issues to begin with. We just wouldn't. We'd, we'd already had them figured out. The, the federal government wouldn't be dumping billions of dollars into schools for COVID relief if they felt like schools could just fix them in their normal capacity to begin with. We have to remember that we're talking about a, a short period of time, two years in, in essence is a short period of time, in which we have the ability to address things in which our students lost out on. If we, if we continue to do the same thing within the day, we will continue to hear from our staff that we ask more of them in a condensed amount of time. They're going to have less time next year than they have this year. Yes, we added days, but in terms of the school day, they're going to have less time and we're going to continue to ask more from them. When they have asked us to address how we're going to take something off of their plate, we have the opportunity now to do it. We have the opportunity to say, you don't have to carve out this additional twenty minutes out of the vast amount of things that they're already doing. We can say, we're going to give you this time and not only are we going to give it to you, but we're going to give you the curriculum, we're going to give you the resources, we're going to give you the, the, the training to be able to do it. And that is something that we can take out of your day for, for other areas in which we've tried to implement intervention for, for small groups of kids. That's the other side of that argument that we have to be aware of. We have the ability to do something different, right? Outside of the normal school day because that's what they gave us the funds to do. And the opportunity to take some things off of our staff's plate. Yes, it's a longer day for them. Certainly they're going to be compensated for it. But the other piece of that is that we open up the rest of their school day to do the things that they want to do with their students and that they need to do with their students.
Yeah, you're not taking them out of core instruction in order to, to, to do it. And that is important.
I agree.
That's important.
Yep.
So I was sitting here thinking, listening to everybody talk, I s- I see everybody's side. I just don't see how we make up time without adding some time. It just, my math, that doesn't work. I don't know how we get there. I know we've already talked to our other middle and high school principals about, you know, taking back and looking at these other things. But the proof in the test scores that you just showed, not having the, as much math intervention as we do reading interventions, the proof is in the pudding. And I don't know how we don't catch that up without adding time somewhere. And if we've cut off basically ten minutes and we're only from the last several years to add days, we're only talking ten minutes. I think that's about two passing periods that we're walking to class that really all we've added to the day. Um, I know some school districts even start later than us and are getting home even later than, you know, well after four o'clock, probably five o'clock. And it is a long day. But how do we catch up the math part and maintain the reading going the direction it is? Plus the other core subjects that matter too. Because trying to do that in the regular sched- scheduled part of the day, something's going to get left behind if we carve that out.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else?
I think it's important for us to recognize that the, the issues that were identified here for middle school tonight in tier do not exist at the elementary level. Their day is packed. It is absolutely packed. And it is, as easy as it might be to adjust some things at the middle school to change that schedule and we, we showed an idea in the update of what that might look like. It doesn't exist across all of our buildings.
I had one last question. How are we able to improve the, the reading and do that without adding? Did we add time to bring that in?
We did it ten years ago when we started the multi-tiered systems of support. We pulled time out of every other period of the day to create an, an intervention time within the core instruction.
Can I speak for Schedule Elementary? So I was at Lincoln when we started the MTSS process and part of that, as we saw success, we tried to build in the math piece at the same time. So we built the schedule that had tier two and tier three uh, math intervention. Ultimately, what you had to decide was, are kids who really needed intervention, what were we willing to give up? Were we willing to take them out of recess? Were we willing to take them out of specials? Because what you did was you compacted your day. It was so full and every spot, it put a lot of strain on our teaching staff. Because ultimately what it did was every part of that day was scheduled. You couldn't deviate and do any kind of fun activity because if you did, you messed up some kids' math intervention piece. And ultimately we backed away from it because we found out we were doing more, um, I don't want to say harm, but we were putting a lot of strain on our system. We weren't able to, to either staff it appropriately because we were stretching our, our staff so thin. But the scheduling piece, you really had to make some decisions as to where your priorities were for kids because most of your kids who needed real intensive reading intervention also needed really intensive math intervention. So they needed, outside of your core instruction blocks, most of them needed another sixty minutes at least on both subjects. And so to make it all fit, it, it, it was a real challenge. At some point I can share the schedule we had. Um, and Dr. Cobb's consented in the update if you'd like.
Thank you.
Dr. Cobb, is there another way to add like, with some of this money over the two years? I know we have Title One, like reading people that have those interventions. Would there be a way to add additional staff or something? I'm just trying to think outside the box with the money there for math in some of these buildings?
And certainly it's a conversation worth having. I think that one of the things we're going to see is it's going to be very difficult to hire.
Yeah.
Um, I, and, and the other part is if, when we have the conversation that their jobs are not guaranteed past two years. I don't know that we'll get a lot of takers on that. But you're not the only one that's asked that question. It's come up with several other people and it's certainly something that, that we have to consider moving forward.
Well, and that's the last thing I was going to say. We've had luck with coaches, as you call them, okay? And, and I was asking the same thing, but you've answered the, the question. Uh, but um, I think that something needs to be done. There's no doubt that uh, something needs to be done. And I agree with the elementary day is packed. I get that. So um, I think it'll, like I said, it'll be interesting what you come up with and bring back.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, stay right there. Um, we have the latest gating metrics, which we have all reviewed. Is there anything you'd like to, to say about that?
Oh, you guys have all seen them, I think. Pretty self-explanatory.
Perfect.
Oh, come on, take another ten minutes.
All right. We do not need an executive session for personnel tonight, but you all have been presented a personnel report. Would somebody like to take action to approve said report?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Chris Cunningham and seconded by Linda Alderman that we approved tonight's personnel report. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes six oh and we are down to announcements.
Yeah, so we'll just run through this real quick. Remember, there's no school on Friday. It's a PD day. No school on Monday, an observance of President's Day. It is uh, we got to talk about our wrestlers for a little bit and, and, and what Coach Widel has done with uh, with both, with both teams, the, the men's team and the women's team. But our wrestlers were district champs uh, last Saturday. Every wrestler qualified uh, to wrestle this weekend at regionals. They have to be in the top four this weekend to go to substate, have to be in the top four at substate to go on, onto state. But uh, incredible team that he has put together there. We also have four, um, four of our, our lady wrestlers who have qualified um, to, to move on this weekend. And Madison Solman, Sherey Aho, Darby Widel and, and Anissa Ultras. Fantastic kids, fantastic athletes and doing a great job. And certainly we're not the only ones that recognize that Coach Widel is awesome, uh, as he was named District Coach of the Year. Uh, when, and he's just been an incredible addition to our team. Um, there's been some questions about uh, where we're at with the RFP process. I met with Daryl today. Those RFPs are going to go out hopefully by the end of the week. Uh, we can finish uh, paint and flooring um, and restrooms and all of those things at Garfield and, and also some, um, some at Lincoln. Um, and some paint uh, to finish up the middle school. Uh, and then vaccinations will continue at OMS this weekend as we continue to roll through there and do the best that we can. Not getting a lot of vaccines in, but um, continue to, to make a dent in it, make some progress. That's all I have.
Uh, I'd like to add, I think Coach Widel, this is only his second full season or third full season?
Second.
And what amazing job he's done at turning a program around to be in one of the top programs in the area.
I think it just goes to show you the impact that a coach can have.
And Mr. and Mrs. Black are both appreciated and do have a valuable role too.
Absolutely.
From top down, they.
And I might add, in one sport that, as we've discussed before with COVID, you would have thought that you might have had an issue. I mean, not only have they done excellent in getting there, they've done excellent with keeping COVID in check.
He does a lot of crazy things at practice to make sure that we keep our kids safe.
I know. That's wonderful. Very good.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes six oh.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.